Good evening. I would like to call to order the September 25th, 2017 Centerville Board of Education Agenda. Roll call please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Annie Self.
Here.
Mr. Schreier and Mrs. Osterhage.
Here. If we could please stand and say, "Pledge of Allegiance." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'm seeking a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening, but I will, if I may modify, before I get a motion, the legislative report this evening will be given by Representative Aunt Toni, who's with us, and I believe that's it. That's the only modification.
So move.
Okay.
Roll call please Mitch.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self and Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Next on the agenda, the Board of Education report, Representative Aunt Toni.
Well, thank you, Dr. Henderson and Board members, for having me. I wanted to be able to come by while our schedules matched up and give you an update of what's going on in the legislature and what has progressed so far this year, and also what we're perhaps wanting to see coming down the pipeline. So the first thing is, obviously, the biggest thing we do in odd years is the state budget, $72 billion, most of which goes to Medicaid and education. You know, I won't go through every step, but as you know, there are really six steps in the process from the governor's introduction to the final version, where the governor will introduce a version, the House will then introduce a revised version, and then we'll introduce another revised version, the Senate will introduce a version, they'll introduce their revised version, and then the conference committee report. And so, you know, throughout that process, you know, different things occur, particularly around school funding. In this budget, there were two controversial items unrelated to the budget in the education space. Number one was to require you, as a school board, to have three expicio business people on your board. We in the House took that out, and that was sustained throughout the process, and so you're not required. And actually, there was a previous requirement that requires every district to have a business advisory council already. So not only did we think it was a bad idea, because you should, you know, some of yourselves are business people, and, you know, you as elected officials will do your due diligence in reaching out to business people as you see fit, but there's already a requirement in the code that requires this business advisory council. The second controversial item was surrounding teachers. The governor proposed that every teacher in Ohio do a summer co-op or internship with a business to encourage them to get to know, you know, different industries, et cetera. And while the goal was laudable, it was seen as burdensome and unworkable, and, you know, to tell someone who has a master's degree that they need to go intern at a business seemed a bit silly, and so the House took out that provision, and that removal was sustained throughout the Senate process and the conference committee, and so that was reverted. You know, separately from that, I've been, and along with others, been working on about, on high school guidance counselors, and particularly around their training, you know, at the university level in continuing education. We haven't introduced the bill yet, but are still working on it. And rather than do some onerous requirement, we say, "Well, why don't you retake the continuing education that's already required and make that about in-demand jobs," right, and create some online modules so that, you know, folks know their educational options. But so those are the two things, non-budget related. Then we come around to the budget, and I, you know, we tried to do our best to keep in touch with the superintendents throughout the process, but, you know, also didn't want to confuse you, since there are six iterations here. And actually, there was a seventh iteration, because now that I think about it, the governor actually line item vetoed a couple of our funding increases. So, you know, we sought, I think, around TPP reimbursement issue and a couple other issues to increase funding, and the governor line item vetoed that, so actually, the conference report spreadsheet was incorrect. So I had to go out and get a new report, which I have in front of me, and which says that from fiscal year '17 to '18, this is the final total, not just the foundation formula, but the final total, that Centerville will see a $360,818.68 increase of '18 over '17. But then, unfortunately, in '19 over '18, we'll see a $312,114.19 decrease, and so take you back down to just about where you were in fiscal year '17. One of the things that, you know, we did in the last budget that I was a part of that unfortunately was not done in this budget is to hold people harmless fiscal year over fiscal year. So the thought was, you know, call it guaranteed, which is the term that is used, and unfortunately, that was not done in this budget. And I think that Centerville largely, you know, Mr. Beederman can correct me, has been on a guarantee, and unfortunately, in this budget, we were not able to have that guarantee. And I have lots of school districts on a guarantee, so that's something that we wanted. For CAP districts, which I do not believe Centerville is one, but West Carrollton and Mainersburg and a couple others are, the cap was increased by half a percent, and so, you know, guaranteed districts were hurt, but CAP districts were helped. And so that's where the school funding, you know, piece was left. And obviously, you know, the next budget won't be until 2019, but, you know, I'm always open to, you know, hearing feedback throughout the process and what we can do better. You know, there's always going to be this pull of dollars, and, you know, one of the things I think that was good in the grand context, and perhaps I should have said this at the beginning, is that, you know, the state, from fiscal year to fiscal year, needed to cut $800 million, right? And so one of the things we said is, okay, well, you know, where are the cuts going to come from? And I think there was a large fear that, you know, education, K-12 education in particular, would see, you know, severe cuts to make up for it, because it's just such a large line item. And one of the things that was good was that, you know, the K-12 line item was not, did not see a severe cut. I think there might have been, I think, all line items received a 1.2% cut off the top, but did not receive, you know, a disproportionate cut to that effect. So that's where the budget stood. One other issue I want to talk about outside the budget, and then open to questions, there was a bill that went through a committee, by the vice chair, that requires school districts to teach cursive writing. The standards already say that writing must be taught, but leaves it up to school boards to determine, obviously, the curriculum. This bill would require cursive to be taught at every school district, and would not give them the choice. I voted against it, and actually, the chairman of the committee voted against it, so the chairman and the vice chair voted against it, but the rest of the committee voted for it. I voted against it, because I think that it's really up to you, as duly elected officials, to decide your curriculum and whether cursive writing should be taught or not. And quite frankly, you know, there's this, I'm learning this pro-cursive movement out there with, you know, some retired teachers and educators and parents, and what I told them, I said, "Well," I said, "Have you gone to your school boards and tried to get them to amend their curriculum for this?" And they said, "Well, there's lots of school boards, it's just easier to get a bill introduced." And I said, "Well, that's not how our system of government works," right? We have low control of education for a reason. You need to, you know, work with your school boards and advocate to your school boards if you want cursive writing taught. And I did take a poll of my superintendents, and it was overwhelmingly against, and that is how I voted. But that bill, again, did pass out of the House Committee. I do not believe it, we voted on it on the floor yet, but it's the chairman of the Education Committee who sponsored the bill, and so, you know, I expect that there may be some action on that, so keep a lookout for that. And, you know, I don't know how Senator Leener feels on the subject, but it is something that could be coming. So, you know, with that, we're in regular session now through, really, May, with, you know, breaks for Thanksgiving and Christmas and Easter, but, you know, I don't, you know, really, you know, obviously, there are the hot topics of the opioid epidemic, which is a tragedy, and some of these other things. You know, I don't know of any bill that seems to be hot right now besides that cursive one, but if there is, I will certainly let you know. And if you know of anyone, please, any bill that you're concerned about, please do let me know. So thank you for giving me time to update you, and happy to take any questions.
Questions? All right. Unfunded mandates. They continue to be an issue for us. The latest one is the requirements, I don't know if you know, of special ed requirements, in terms of how many teachers or aides we have to have per number of students in classrooms. Again, it was set by the state again. It's requiring us to hire approximately 26 new employees, $750,000 in salary per year, an ongoing expense, with no help from the state, zero dollars coming, and as you just said, in our budget, at the end of a few years, we're exactly where we were. And we're going to have this ongoing expense now because of an unfunded mandate by the state. Do you know anything about that, or how you voted on that?
Sure. Well, that wasn't a legislative initiative that I know of, but do you know if that was so? Part of the problem in education policy is that we have three entities that do it, okay? We have the legislature, we have the Department of Education, run by the state superintendent, and then we have the state school board. And so, you know, any of them can put down a rule like this. Are you familiar with what rule this came down to?
It's federal.
It was federal? Okay.
So a federal requirement, but funds come through the state.
Sure. Yeah, so since it was federal and being, you know, at the state level, I'm not familiar with it, but I'm happy to talk to Congressman Turner.
It's a good example of another issue where the legislator's taking money from our school district over the course of two years, and yet we're having ongoing expenses at significant increases.
Sure.
How many districts that you represent are on the guarantee, do you know?
Oh, boy. So Mainersburg, West Carroll, so I have Centerville, Mainersburg, West Carrollton, Valley View, and parts of Kettering. Centerville, I'm sorry, you're obviously on the guarantee, you were on the guarantee. Mainersburg and West Carrollton are capped. Valley View, I believe, was on the guarantee, and Kettering, I believe, is on the guarantee. So about half and half. You know, I mean, my policy, and the CAP districts don't necessarily like this, I think that we should start from do no harm, right? And that's my policy for the local government fund, and, you know, when talking to trustees and city council people, I think we should start by do no harm, and then where we can help, we should help, right? And if the CAP, if it's CAP districts, then we should help, but I do not believe that we should hurt some school districts to help the others. Now, there's this overriding philosophy, unfortunately, at the State House, is that, you know, some people, and the word is capacity that has started to be used, that communities that have capacity to raise dollars through levies should be put in a position where they should or have to, right? Which is a big problem for my district, because all of my districts are capacity districts. And, you know, we saw this in the local government fund, a local government fund, which obviously doesn't affect you, but does affect the city of Centerville and the township and everything. The governor put in 20% of the local government fund, was based on a capacity formula, and he made up a formula that basically said that, you know, more affluent areas would receive less funds because they have the capacity to raise a lot. Well, you and I both know how difficult it is to do that, and so we were able to get that capacity formula out. But I think that's where some of this get rid of the guarantee and, you know, increase the cap tugging pull came from. You know, I think there was one school district, again, on the spreadsheet, but one school district, I think it may have been Kettering, that received a cut in both years. And, you know, you went up in one, one went down in one, but there was one school district who suffered under that in Montgomery County, but, you know, so that is an ongoing fight, definitely, at the State House, as well as the mandate thing, which is why I voted against the cursive bill. I mean, I'll look into this federal issue and talk to our federal producer about that.
Mr. Aunt Toni, the thing that impacted us was, we had the, we had actually the furthest draw of any school district in the state of Ohio being on the guarantee. The guarantee wasn't left the same neither, it was actually reduced. It was a reduced guarantee from the previous year. And the other component that impacted us the most was the cut in the transportation funding because of that whole way that formula worked out in the guarantee. So I don't know what you can say, or if you can speak to the transportation component. I tried to communicate with legislators best I could about how important that was to our school district, providing transportation for all of our kids, and, you know, just kind of how that process continued did not be a priority in this past budget was kind of concerning to me.
How much money was that, which that we lost because of that?
We lost about $600,000, I believe, in that.
Every year?
Yeah.
Year over year?
Yeah.
Right. Well, you know, that is something good to know, and, you know, obviously, the majority of the discussion was around the foundation formula, and to be honest, I didn't hear too much about the transportation issue until the very end, but, you know, going forward, you know, that's something good to know, and hopefully, in the next budget, we can work on that, and I'll talk to my other districts as well. You know, anything, anytime those comes up, you know, please do contact me. I know that the public had raised some issues with the transportation issue, but, you know, was not aware of that as far as your issue.
The reason, you know, $600,000 is a lot. I mean, there was moving parts through the whole guaranteeing and the formula, even though we are on the guarantee, there were some other areas that went up and some areas that went down, but the transportation piece over two years, I believe, was $600,000, over two-year period, so just to clarify.
Yeah, and, you know, throughout the six different iterations, there are changes that cause other things to go up and go down, and you have to, you know, try to stake your claim for what you want the best, and so I don't, you know, and, you know, your state associations are put in a tough position, because you're pitting, you know, mostly suburban districts against urban and rural. And quite frankly, you know, I and a couple other suburban legislators talk about this a lot, and we were talking about this, actually, just the other week, about these report cards, that, you know, suburban schools unfortunately make out the worst in just about everything, right? Because, you know, the school districts that struggle make out better, and are the ones that the governor would like to see, you know, more funding to, and he takes funding from the school districts that perform well. I don't agree with it, and we have a coalition of suburban legislators from our, from Dayton, Cincinnati, Columbus, and Cleveland that try to fight these. We don't always win, but we do. But, you know, the transportation issue is good to know about, and we'll track it going forward.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll find your email and respond.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is Student Board Representatives Report.
Hello, I'm Megan Rose. This is Ellen, personal too, and then Sarah is not here with us today. She actually is involved in Mont Trado, so she also does something outside of this. And I just wanted to tell you guys what we've been doing in the past month. We met with Mr. Carroll, and we decided on our mission statement. We are going to be the voice of the Centerville High School student body. And one way in which we'll complete our mission is through monthly newsletters that we'll send out to every student through CHS by their school email. Before we send out these emails, we're going to have Mr. Carroll and Mrs. Self, who is on the board, review them, just to get them passed and then, like, approved by them, and then we'll send them out every month. And one thing that we're going to include in next month's newsletter is a Google form for any students to voice their concerns or opinions they have about what the board should do, or any questions for us. And we really hope that this newsletter will help inform the students on what the board has been doing that month, and we want to encourage more students to come to the work sessions and formal board meetings. And something interesting, both Sarah and I are going to be turning 18 soon, so we're going to be involved at Youth with Booth, so we're volunteering at the polls for this November election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Hearing of the Public. The Board of Education provides this as an opportunity for public comment, and before any official action is taken. If anyone is interested in addressing the board, as a speaker, you would need to come to the podium and address the board in no more than three minutes. The board will listen to all who speak, but generally, we will not engage in discussion or dialogue tonight. Matters requiring follow-up will be directed to Dr. Henderson, and individual board members can be contacted for a set meeting appointment, and written correspondence can, of course, be mailed to the board office. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to the board? Okay, seeing no one. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Beederman?
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to share some information about the budget for this year and the five-year forecast. Five-year forecast and the overall budget must be approved prior to October 1, 2017, and upon approval, both documents will be made available on the district website, and also the forecast will be made available on the website for the High Department of Education. Since last month, I have increased the 2017-18 budget for our self-insured medical insurance program due to increased claims during the summer months and higher enrollments in the plan caused by additional staffing for special education as required by law, as Dr. Rohr spoke to a little bit earlier. An 8.7% increase to expenses is now being projected for the, for this school fiscal year for medical insurance. Administration and the board are also considering making a dental insurance carrier change to Delta Dental, beginning January 1, 2018. Our plan is to have rates established for both medical and dental insurance at the regular board meeting next month, which will still give us plenty of time to prepare properly and do open enrollments in November. Changing dental insurance carriers would save the district $120,000-plus over the next two years. Delta Dental is a nationally known dental insurance carrier with a network as strong as the current provider that we have, and also would have some flexibility to possibly be able to self-fund that program in the future to potentially save more money. The projected medical insurance increase and dental insurance decrease are the only two changes to the forecast for the 2017-18 budget as presented to the board last month. The annually required resolution to accept the tax amounts and rates provided by the county auditor is on the agenda tonight for approval. We haven't had any new levies, so there isn't any changes in the total millage of 77.56 for our school district. Because property values have gone up over time, the 77.56 rate for Centerville has been reduced to 47.9, as you can see in the red box there, because the property values in our community have continued to increase. This rate drop is the impact of House Bill 920 enacted in 1976, which keeps higher property values from generating additional money to our school district. We should see some minor increases from new property construction in our community and higher property value, values from what is called inside millage, but this is a very small amount of local money that every school district will receive when the overall property values increase. This chart also shows a breakdown of the reduced tax rates for area schools after the impact of House Bill 920 is imposed. As you can see, Oakwood is the highest at 74.6 effective rate, and then Jefferson is at the bottom at 30.4 mills. Our school district, again, is near the bottom at 47.9 mills. Because Centerville property values are strong, our tax rate will continue to go lower, giving Centerville residents excellent value on their homes. It is worth stating that even when we do need another levy, our tax rate will still be among one of the lower rates in the county. In this last slide, I would like to share that our district is still financially strong, but our revenue and expenditure lines will cross this year as we begin to spend more than we are taking in. Please remember, we have one of the lowest tax rates in Montgomery County, and we do thank our community for locally supporting our school district. That concludes my report this evening, unless there are any questions from the Board of Education.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to the Treasurer's Recommendations. If I could have a motion to consider approving the August 2017 financial statements to include the monthly financial report, the fund activity report, appropriations, general funding spending report, general fund summary, general fund summary comparison, and purchase orders included in Statement Number 7 approved by administration, then and now, certified by the Treasurer and supported by board resolution totaling $474,599.2.
So move.
Roll call please Mitch.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the regular, of the following Board of Education meetings. August 28, 2017, the regular meeting, September 18, 2017, the special work session.
So move.
Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider adopting fiscal year 2018 appropriations by fund. The general fund at $102,594,332. Supplemental appropriations, all other funds, bond retirement, permanent improvement, services, et cetera. Funds 002 through 599 is listed in the amount of $33,569,832. Grand total, all appropriations, $136,000,136,164,164.
So move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. I'm sorry, that was a very big number. Next on the agenda, consider approving the general fund five-year forecast and assumptions for the submission to the Ohio Department of Education.
So move.
Second.
Roll, roll call please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approving a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
So move.
Second.
Roll call please Mitch.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Now, the Superintendent's Recommendations. The superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status for the certificated persons listed on Schedule B, for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff persons listed on Schedule C, for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the persons listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. The superintendent recommends the granting of leave of absence for the persons listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given.
So move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Additionally, the superintendent recommends the employment of the persons listed on Schedule D2 for the supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
So move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Dahl.
Stand.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider the following transportation items. The acceptance of transportation responsibilities for the 2017-18 school year from the school districts and for the students that I will not disclose that are listed on the agenda. School District Kettering City Schools, and the release of transportation responsibilities for the 2017-18 school year for the students to the school districts listed below. The school districts are Bellbrook Sugar Creek Schools, there are two students, Kettering City Schools, there are two students.
So move.
Roll call please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Consider approving Board Policy Number 2413, Career Advising, required to be reapproved every two years by Ohio Statute, Ohio Advice Code 3313.6120.
So move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Dr. Roer.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approving revised Board Policy Number 9130, Public Complaints, and new Board Policy Number 7540.05, Web Accessibility. And before we do that, I would like for Dr. Henderson to maybe make a couple comments, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Osterhage. Just wanted the public to know that if you go to our website and you go to the Board of Education page, there is a link to the Board Policy Manual, and so periodically throughout the school year, the board must make some changes or modify, or as you just heard, by law, some board policies have to be reapproved with no changes every two years or periodically. The last two board policies that the board will approve here in just a minute were discussed at a work session last week. The first one that I'll talk about is web accessibility. I think most of you that are in our district know that this past summer, the district launched a new website. We're very proud of that new website. And one of the things that school districts and any other entity that has a website is they have to make sure that the website is accessible to all. So if a person were to go there and have some kind of a disability, everything that they would click on, or if they couldn't use a mouse and they had to use an arrow key, for example, it would still work. And so this web accessibility policy just reiterates that we will work hard to make sure that our webpage is accessible to all, even if there is a disability, even if that person has a disability. The other policy that the board is approving tonight is not a new policy, but we did want to reiterate with our public a couple things, and that is Policy Number 9130, which is entitled Public Complaints. Periodically throughout the year, our school board and administration do receive anonymous letters, and Board Policy 9130, Public Complaints, does outline a procedural way for us to deal with issues, questions, concerns, complaints in a very thorough manner. When the board receives anonymous letters or complaints, it's very, very difficult to work through those issues without being able to get additional information, without being able to do a thorough investigation, and without being able to do thorough follow-up as well. So the board is modifying that 9130 public complaint board policy to make clearer in that policy that the board really will not address or deal with anonymous complaints. It's just very difficult to work through. We do have an open door policy, though, in our district. I have one in my office, all of my central office team do, and our principals do as well, and the Board of Education as well. You heard Mrs. Osterhage read just a few minutes ago that any time individuals want to reach out to the Board of Education, to myself, the superintendent, any of the administrators across the district, we're happy to listen, we're happy to work through those issues, concerns, and complaints, and do the appropriate investigation and appropriate follow-up. So thank you for the opportunity to clarify a little bit tonight, and appreciate that you're working through this.
Thank you very much, Dr. Henderson. So we had a motion by Annie.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Roer.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. And finally, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Roer.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.